I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. MBE Cede, thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda is citizen concerns. Are there any concerned citizens who would like to approach the board? Hearing none, we'll move to item three, approval of the agenda dated July 5th, 2006.
Move. Second.
We have a motion and a second as their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the agenda is approved five to zero. Item four, approval of the June 28th, 2016 meeting.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second as their discussion.
Are you going to correct the minutes?
Clear, clear.
Very good, thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second? We do. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item five is discussion and approval of the claims. I will move them if I can receive a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item number six is a good news report on the Suland District Health Clinic renovation completion, and very much looking forward to our Board of Health meeting tomorrow. I'm sure we'll have some discussion and maybe a short tour. But we have Kevin Green with us today.
Kevin Green, Director of Sulester Health Department. First off, thanks to each and every one of you for the role you played in helping support and approve the funding and support throughout the project. I'm proud to announce that on June 24th, we did the final walkthrough with the contractor, developed a punch list. They were as interested as we were in getting everything finalized, and so they completed that by the end of the day on Monday, and by Wednesday at close of business, I had the final construction and completion documents. So we did meet our timeline, it was quite aggressive. Kenny Schmitz, thanks to him also for building services and the work that he did and help going through that. But right now where we're at in the process is that I think staff is impressed with the looks of the facility, and right now they're trying to adjust because it's a total change in clinic flow. So we're making small adjustments, and it's pulling two different divisions together. So we're proud to announce that it's done, it's completed, we're moving into it, and on top of all this with the renovations and kind of the disruption of that, we also put in a new E-WIC system that moved us from the I-WIC. So we had a lot of transition and change going on, so I commend the staff for their flexibility in working with that. So overall, thanks very much. Look forward to scheduling an event with the Chamber for Chamber after hours, we'll be inviting the Board of Supervisors. I think it's great that you get due acknowledgement for the role that you played and in that county facility. So any questions from any Board members?
Can you explain quickly the difference between an E-WIC and an I-WIC for those of us?
Or I-WIC?
It's Star Wars.
Okay, yes, acronym veil. I-WIC is actually the old paper check benefit system that comes with the Women's Infant and Children Program, and what they are doing across the state is we were the sixth location in the state to move to what they call E-WIC. And what E-WIC is, is basically a card that the benefits are included on. So what it does as far as for our WIC participants is they have a food package loaded on that. When they go to the grocery store, they used to have to self-determine what qualified for WIC and what didn't, and the grocers needed to determine it. Right now what they're able to do is they're able to buy their groceries, they scan that card much as they would a debit card, it reduces those benefits that are paid for via that, and then they're able to use another payment means. So it really kind of electronically provides those benefits out to the WIC participants. And we've heard resounding positive impact, although it has, we had to make services unavailable for 10 days, and we are doing one and a half times the number of appointments through the months of June, July, and halfway through August to play catch-up, and on top of that we got hit with the WIC Farmers Market Checks. So there's just been a lot of volume and capacity of work to be done within that. So it's called the perfect storm, but the weathering it, we're moving through it.
Great. Any questions, discussion? I want to thank you, Kevin, for your leadership in this effort. I know it's been a long time in the coming both through the budget process as well as the service delivery and keeping your eye on that and discussions with your staff, so very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. We'll look forward to that event. Item number seven, Human Resources, Ed Gilliland. Item 7A is the approval of a memorandum of personnel transaction.
Move it. Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second as their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign authorization.
Move it.
I have a motion and a second as their discussion.
Is that an in-house posting?
That's a good question. Let me see. We're just going through these. No, I don't lose someone. There was one person that's moved, and then we've had another person will be transferring from the Sheriff's Department to the County Attorney's Department, and when that happens, we'll have, we'll have, this, there will be an opening for this position. So we're in the process of rewriting the, making sure that we've got everything straight because we've never actually advertised for this position on an outside basis. This will be the first time this new position as a senior clerk will be advertised.
So we have a motion?
Thought we did.
And a second. Thank you for keeping me on top of things. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Ed. Item eight, Board Administration, Public bidder, Heather Shadewite. This is an approval of notice of property sale resolution for partial number 444495.
Move to place it on the agenda for the 19th day of July at 4:35.
I'll second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item nine with our county auditor, Pat Gill, is to approve a cigarette permit for Heritage Express. I'll second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item 10, Building Services, Kenny Schmitz. This is courthouse steam system analysis. This is an information item. I understand you may have some individuals with you as well today. So Kenny?
I do. Kenny Schmitz, Building Services, have with me today Corey Metzger with Resource Consulting Engineers, who did the study for, on the steam traps and our hydronic system. And Corey, I'd welcome you to come up to the podium and let us share your findings with the board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Do you have an interest in seeing the drawings as we walk through this? I don't, I don't want to slow things down if...
If you think it's, it would be helpful, or if you're referencing them, I don't know how easy it is to see, or if there's a pleasure of the board to...
It'll just take a second to get them up, if that's all right?
Sure.
I actually have a hard copy too, if you'd like to unroll those.
Why don't we go ahead and if, if the, any supervisor feels it's necessary, we can unroll the scroll, so to speak.
So I think you may have seen a, just a two-page quick summary that I put together regarding our findings in going through the building. So we went through every level of the building, we attempted to find all the steam traps. We're confident that we found the vast majority. I would guess there are a few ceilings that are very hard to get to, so we may find two or three others at some point in the future, but we've got the vast majority identified. So right now we found close to 300, 298. I noticed one error in our report. So 205 of those are thermostatic type, that's typically what you see on a radiator. 82 are float and thermostatic type, not thermostatic type, I apologize for the missing words there. And then 11 are inverted bucket traps.
They're what?
Inverted bucket traps. It's just a different type of steam trap, so it's typically used where you may need to lift condensate just a little bit, it allows you to lift it without pumping. And there are just a few spots where that was required, and then it was also used on a number of humidifiers. The general background, and I'll try to keep it brief, please interrupt me with any questions though, is that the vast majority of the traps in the building have been in place for approximately 20 years or more without having been serviced. So the important items to note in the bullet points down below there are that the thermostatic traps will typically fail open if they fail. So the traps that you have 205 of, when they fail, they fail open. And I don't know if you're familiar with steam trap operation, but the function of a steam trap is to keep steam in a load until it has condensed to condensate, so that you get all the heat energy you can out of the steam. What we're trying to do is actually get energy from a phase change rather than a temperature change. So if steam is bypassing that trap, you're losing energy, and eventually it can vent through the building and you lose not only the energy that has been put into that steam, but also the chemical in the water that's, that's in that steam. So it's got a significant operating cost implication associated with it when you're losing steam. Our study identified the locations, types of traps. We cannot, we were not able to assess the operational condition of traps as part of this process, but want to, I think, clearly identify that the traps you have the most of are a type that typically when they fail, they fail open. Float and thermostatic traps typically fail closed, so you, you don't have as much to worry about from an energy standpoint there, although comfort becomes a serious concern because if the trap fails, eventually the load that it serves fills with condensate and no longer does any heating.
Would it be accurate to say that when the float and thermostat type fail closed, you're going to get cold complaints, and when it fails open on the 205, you're, it's, you're going to get warm complaints?
Yes.
Right?
That would be very accurate to assume that.
Thank you, because I was just about to ask what that meant.
Yeah. Inverted buckets can fail in different ways. You have many fewer of those, they are not, in my mind, a significant concern at this point as compared to your thermostatic and float and thermostatic traps. There are a number, so you have traps ranging from original to the building to those that were installed in 97. There are actually a few on the snow melt system that were installed more recently than that, in the early 2000s, but the vast majority of the traps in the building haven't been touched in 20-plus years. So there are some that are inaccessible and have been here much longer than 20 years. They're installed in spots where there's piping in front of them, or they're at a location that you couldn't safely access. There's one back here from the 97 work that was done that you'd have to climb over your main switchgear to get to, which we generally don't recommend, so...
Approximately how many?
That are inaccessible? I'd say 10 to 15. So it's, it's not the majority, but we would certainly recommend with those trying to repipe them so they're in an accessible location. There's one that we found that's installed upside down. Generally doesn't function as well in that it's got a float on it, it's a float and thermostatic, and the float is gravity-based, so when you install it upside down, it just hangs open. So there are a number that we would suggest need to probably have some work done to address their operational capabilities so that they can be serviced in the future. Based on what we found, our suggestion would be that there are a couple of different paths you could take. One would be to attempt to service, we'd recommend getting them all serviced as quickly as you can, because there's a good chance that a number of the traps are not functioning properly at this point, which has a significant energy impact and dollar impact for your operating budget. So we'd suggest attempting to service them as quickly as possible. You could go through and try to ascertain the, the function of each trap and determine whether or not it's currently functional. My suggestion would be that given the, the amount of time that we've had since some of these traps were put into service and have been serviced, it may be more beneficial to go through and just service all the traps, so that you know that you have everything at a good starting point, and that you can move forward with a routine maintenance service plan in place, testing the traps. And you're not going to test 300 traps all once a year, but if you can split it into chunks and say we're going to do 75 a year, you can get through all of them in four years, and the chances of having failed traps at that point that are operating for extended periods of time goes down significantly.
When you say service...
So...
My first thought is we replace them.
That's a, that's a great question. So most of your traps in the building are set up, so the thermostatic traps have a diaphragm in them, you can actually just take the top off, replace the diaphragm, put the top back on. The float and thermostatic traps have a kit that comes in, so they've got a couple of pieces in them, and just get, basically you remove the guts from the trap and put a new assembly in, in its place. So wherever the bodies are in good shape, we can typically do that, you don't have to disassemble piping or take everything apart to get that done. You can just open the accessible covers that are on the traps, replace those components, and then close them again. One other item that we'd suggest if you do move forward with trying to get that servicing done, and you're going to go through and do all of them, is that it would likely be worthwhile to get it tested, just to, to make sure that what you've paid for is at a good working condition to start, and that having an objective third party do that is probably the best option. We've got some numbers on that, it's, it's not, as compared to the cost of the work, to get the work done, getting them tested after that is complete, would not be a significant percentage of the overall cost to replace, or not, not to replace, to repair or service the traps. There are, one other item to note, and I'm sorry, I'm going on too long. There are a lot of traps in the upper levels where you've got cabinetry that is in front of Fintube radiators that aren't easily accessible. Some of them have access doors, but if you do go through to do service work, there's going to be some general construction to move some cabinetry or casework out away from the wall in certain areas to allow access to the traps. There may be some access panels that need to get installed as part of that to allow for better access moving forward. The last item to note, that's not related directly to the traps, but from an energy and water usage standpoint, right now you're cooling your condensate, which we may help this issue somewhat by addressing the trap functionality. You're cooling your condensate with once-through domestic water down in the basement, I don't know if you've been down into that space, but there's a significant amount of water being used to cool condensate before it goes down the drain. So there, there may be better options, or some modifications that could be made to the system that would improve that operation.
Great. Shane, you had started to approach the podium, do you want to add anything as you were managing this?
Yeah, so basically, right now we, we've worked with Kenny to have a budget for 2017 to the CIP. We needed to know a number for traps, we could get some adequate budget numbers put together for you, as well as come back. We've been in contact with Mid-American, ClearResult, and the Energy Group to try to get quantified what, what rebates could be available to do this work. So our next step that we're feeling is going to happen is we'll bring this back before the board with a proposal because of the dollar amount that we're estimating this project to be, it'll have to go out for bid, so it'll be a planned inspect job. Because of the timeframe, that's the best work on steam traps, we'd be best to get this work done sooner rather than later. So it's already, Kenny did, already did the budget for the CIP, so our next step on this will keep, keep moving forward to bring back to the board a proposal for what the next phase would be, for what the design of this would be to get it to go out for bid, and what the commissioning piece of that would be, so the board can then make a choice on that, okay? And we'll try to have our answers back from Energy Group and ClearResult at that time, so everybody knows what the, what the rebates are available as well.
And when you say going out for bid, you're talking about what the board has already approved for a CIP budget for this next fiscal year, and within that, that would be doing what? I mean, we've done the study now, that was necessary, but...
So we would actually take it out for bid, for somebody to go out to the 200 and 205 or whatever of the, the 17Cs, the easy ones, and they would put a new repair kit in there, because in review when we looked at that, all it needs is guts put in it, you know? And then to go to the ones, the 10 or 15 that are inaccessible, and we will actually pipe those out so that they can be accessible in the future. The, we're the, so the Joshua's floor, third floor? Third floor, when we go back into the, where the lawyers and everybody sit and judges or whatever that are on the third floor, they have all the bookshelves on the back, that's where a lot of, Corey was referring to, the, the traps are back there, some of them have access panels in, some of them don't. Like in PJ's office and stuff, there's no way to get back to them, so we actually have to take those bookshelves out as part of that project. But then we would be getting that and cutting an access panel into that, so then you just, Kenny down the road can just pull some books. I mean, the goal of this would be, the reason it was put in the CIP was in 2016, 17, whenever this project happens, it's a reset, so everything in the whole building has been touched. If you, commissioning parts approved, it'll all be verified that it actually is in working shape, and it gives Kenny a chance now that we've reset everything, now he can do his maintenance and get everything back, so hopefully that rectifies some of your hot and cold spots within the building. I mean, it's not a fix to it, but it should definitely help.
Is this a summer project?
I would suggest that it makes the most sense to do it in the summer or fall.
You don't want to...
You don't want to do it in...
We don't want to be doing it during heating season.
So our goal would be to get it back to you, so there's a chance that this can be done before heating season, because that's where this...
Ideally, it's going to be a much faster workflow for a contractor to do this work if the steam system can be shut down. There are some, realistically, the best time for you to do this is probably September, October, if it can all get done then, and the reason for that is, as odd as it may seem, and if you work with mechanical systems a lot, please forgive me for, for this explanation, but we need heat in the summer to prevent subcooling.
Right.
Interior spaces. So it's actually good to have a heating system on a building like today where a lot of the building needs significant cooling. You've got interior spaces fed by air handlers that need heat to prevent them from getting down to 60 degrees.
Yeah.
So that is, there's less of that that occurs in September and October, so we can, and there's also less dehumidification that needs to occur, so we can pump up the climate temperatures temporarily if we need to.
Any questions?
Aside from the inaccessible steam traps, are there traps where there shouldn't be traps? And if so, is, do we just leave them open? Do you take them out?
Actually...
Do we take them out?
I don't know that we found anything that didn't make sense, that wasn't in the right spot, or didn't seem like the right trap for the application.
It's just the access issue.
Yes, there's, there's pipes in front of steam traps to make it...
There, there are probably five or six of these traps that are serving loads that are no longer being used, but there are some original radiators down here in the basement that, as far as anyone from the Building Services Group knows, have not been active for significant periods of time. So those traps would be excluded from any work, would be the intent, but we didn't see anything that didn't make sense, was the wrong trap for the application or was installed incorrectly other than the one that was upside down, so...
It's needed to be right side up. So it's mostly replacing the guts, like you said, it's, none of the hardware on the outside is a problem?
There are a few that are probably of a vintage that we would consider replacing the entire trap, because the, so labor is going to be your significant cost here, it's not the materials that are going into this. For a float and thermostatic trap, you're less than a few hundred dollars for materials for the thermostatic traps, it's less than a hundred dollars each. So the, the cost, when you look at it, the cost for materials is not going to be that dramatic. It's the time it takes to do the work. So if we can replace the internals of the trap, it's going to be much more cost-effective than trying to replace the trap itself, because they can just take the cover off rather than having to try to repipe something. There are some traps that are, that are old enough that have some corrosion on the exterior or other factors that, that we would look at and say, this might be a good candidate for replacement. The cost for a new trap is not that much more than the cost for the replacement kit for the internals of the trap. It's the fact that now you've got piping work outside the trap that has to be factored in, and so that labor's going to add cost.
So the, the 205 are all the same, you call a C-17 or...
17C.
17C.
There are, there are maybe five of those that aren't the same, but yeah.
Oh, okay, but generally speaking, so in the future, under Kenny's direction and supervision, those are, would be fairly easily serviced...
Yep.
On a routine preventative maintenance measure. How about, with these other 82 though, are they wide variations, and when this project gets done, how does that information flow, or maybe that's a Kenny question, and you have that answered already where...
So if you had to...
So we don't get in this situation again, if you see what I'm saying. We get the access to people, so they're easily serviceable.
The documents that you can't see that are up on this, up on the screen, correlated out by floor and by room, so that way, there's now a set of documents that lists the location with the label for where every steam trap, all, all 298 of them are located at. Some of the more challenging ones, Corey's taken pictures, that will be linked in there so you can actually look at a picture to know exactly what you're seeing, so you know when there's three of them in a group or coils that are challenging.
Yeah, so the float and thermostatics, out of the 80, whatever, 82 that we've got, 70 of them are, maybe 75 of them are Hoffman FTO-15Hs is the model. Now, there are a few different sizes of those, so the guts that go into them are slightly different. As we put together documents, if, if you want to move forward and we put together documents for a bid set for a contractor, it'll list the replacement kit for each trap in the building as we go through the entire building, so that, that won't just be useful for bidding purposes, it'll be useful for Building Services staff to be able, down the road, if they, if they're going through and testing traps and they find this one's not functional, they know that, okay, I call the, the local rep and I can get, I want this specific replacement kit.
And, and another thing that we can look at is when we bid this, so many, we do, there's 10 extra kits here set down for your extra material, there's 10 extra of these kits and just a couple extra ones of these, so that way Kenny has them on the shelf already, so when you start, you know, year five, when it, you know, one starts going bad or whatever, they've got the parts there to fix them.
Okay, great. Other questions, discussion?
That's pretty exciting. So when we walk in a room and it's not the right temperature, we know there's one hiding somewhere in the wall, right?
So that's possible. I won't tell this, I, I want to be honest with you, this is not going to fix every problem you've got.
No.
Because control valves are also an issue in some areas. You've got pneumatic controls, I think, from floors three up on the heating. So you've got some older control systems, there are some BDC controllers that have actuators that are bad, so if you walk into an office and you hear it clicking, usually I think that's going to be on your chilled water coil, but there are some of those on the steam coils as well, so it could be other factors, but certainly this will, I'm confident this will make significant strides towards having comfortable spaces in the building.
And one of the struggles we're having with rebates on this, just so you know, is they classify this as...
Shane?
Sorry. Sorry, one of the struggles we're having with rebates on this is they classify this as a hard project to incentivize, because they're recommending the payback to be less than a year on a lot of this stuff, so that's, if they're under a year, they don't give you a rebate or an incentive. So we're struggling to how to get this through the right program so you can still see some of the dollars back as well, as the energy savings, so...
And they do that because they think it's such a no-brainer to do. If it's going to be paid back in less than a year, then you shouldn't need an incentive to do it.
You shouldn't be needing an incentive to do it, it just should be something that you do.
Well, we got water running down the sewer, hand or fist. There's a, there's a little incentive right there.
Anything else?
Other questions, discussion? Thank you very much, appreciate your thorough study, and we look forward to moving forward in the future.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item 11, Chairman's Report, item A is AgExpo Center Report and Continued Dialogue. So I had an initial meeting with the City of Sioux City, TSI, and the AgExpo Board, discussion on next steps going forward, and they will have a follow-up meeting on Friday in order to look at the mechanism for, for financing and keeping with the county board's resolution to help out with this project. So any questions, concerns there? Item B is Department Head Meeting Minutes, everyone should have received those. Ed had a very, and Melissa had a very thorough presentation, and so tried to disseminate all of that information, because there's, there's quite a bit of it.
Isn't that the very, very large email we got?
Yes.
Okay.
We would probably move on to...
But very appreciated as far as the thorough... But very appreciated as far as the thoroughness and we'll keep forging ahead. Item C, deteriorating courthouse windows and marble. Shane wants to come back. Just as they had been going through the courthouse courtroom windows, Shane had mentioned some deterioration in marble that they had been seeing. And so I asked him to approach the board so that he could let everybody know and... Is that heavy? It looks kind of heavy, but...
I thought she wouldn't tell by these.
Okay.
This, thanks for that. So basically, I'm going to give you this. This is, so this is just sill over the top of the windows. You can't see that till you take the window out. As you can see, it's kind of deteriorated over time. They actually filled this gap in between the frames with this, these pieces of wood. That's actually wood. That one's wrapped up, that's wood as well.
When would they have done that? Years ago?
Yeah, like a long time ago, like in the, when the windows were originally put in, whatever.
Oh, wow.
If you see the top of this, just wanted to make sure I didn't hit you with it. You can see how deteriorated and how this has fallen, a part of being the shape it's supposed to be. So there's going to be quite a substantial amount of restoration and piecing to get this back together so it can go back in. I know one of the questions everybody will ask is, well, why aren't we looking at putting in new frames when you look at the shape of this frame? Being this is on the National Historic Register and stuff, their goal is for you to fix what's there. So the rust, the windows that are out or down, somebody, they're welding, grinding out the rust, and they're putting in new pieces of metal and they're putting them back together. Also, it's a quicker process to get them back by doing that than if you've got new ones because the new ones would be about four months. All sill Jeremy has on there, rightfully so, to update you on the marble. Everybody knows that one piece of, sorry. Everybody knows that one piece of marble fell down. We worked with Habrel to try to find a matching piece. Happy to tell you, we found one where all the colors matched. The problem is, in 1916, when they cut the marble, the veins are a lot deeper. So the, when you actually look at it, the color's fine, but the veins that they worked so hard to match in that piece can't be matched. We checked, we checked around. So then we had to ask, again, the historicals, Mark Chavis, what do we want to do? Our recommendation, working with Kenny, was you take all the pieces that are over that window and instead of replacing the one, you replace them all so it doesn't look like it's just... Yeah, one off in the middle. So for doing this, because, so we asked for their opinion as well, from Mark Chavis and Jim Jung and all those people. And that was, that was the answer we got back today is we need to just replace them all. That way they look the same. We'll have Habrel come and take them down so that in case there is other repairs or patches or anything that's needed in any of the other courtrooms, you will have the veining that matches. And this will be underneath, you know, not exactly visible. We don't feel anybody will actually notice the fact it doesn't have the big, long vein lines in it. Plus, it will be matched, computer matched, just like it was. Well, they didn't have a computer, but they matched the veins. If you look at how it's set there, they cut the marble so that it all looks like one piece continuous down there. We will do that same thing so that we keep the integrity of the space the same.
And the Historical Society and Parks are happy with all that?
Yeah, that's who Mark Chavis is. I'm sorry, Mark Chavis is with one of those two. I don't remember who the National Parks? Yeah, National Parks. So we, we've been emailing them to make sure that everything we're doing fits in what they wanted. Originally, when we started there, thought we were only going to have to fix the stationary windows that the operable windows were fine. This piece that's set here is the piece between the two, the two windows. You can see all the rust and the deterioration. The operable windows will need to be fixed as well. So since we got them apart, it makes only sense that we do all of them at this time. Instead of, we were only going to fix the stationary windows because they're the ones from the outside. Take the stationary windows out, you can see it's, the water's running underneath the operable windows as well and they need to be addressed. So rather than put some of them back and leave this for a project for labor, we're recommending that all this is done at one time.
I don't even know if I want to ask this question. Have you looked at your other courtrooms?
Kenny, we, Kenny actually had the forethought. We have CIP budgeted for 2017 for the other courtrooms. Because this was an emergency because of the windows going out, we're using this courtroom as a test on what the process is. Because working with Joshua and stuff and we did the other courtrooms, we plan and inspect and a bid job so that we have them. Since we, nobody had an idea of what you were going to run into until we started with one, this way we'll know, we can write on the documents, you will take out all the windows and hopefully no marble falls and stuff. But one of the things that's going to go on when we replace all the marble is all the wires will now be new and they'll all be back up in there. So I mean, we'll, you know, put this back the way it was originally, hopefully, or better.
Wow, that was good.
Thank you very much, Daniel. Appreciate the visuals and... Item D, rural meetings. These are some dates I have been working with Karen and Heather to help set up and Pearson, Hornet, Salix, and Sloan. And then we're continuing to talk to Bronson and Lawton and Smithland. And so just wanted to, both of us out there, I think we've had very good attendance, both from our board and from the city councils as well as people who come. So, and staff, which we very, very appreciate the, so just wanted to let you know that those are dates that would work for those folks. And wanted to see if there are any discussion on those.
I think they're really thrilled when they get done. They come in a little gun-shy, not sure, sure what they're getting into. But after they find out we're just there, I think that they're pretty pleased.
All right. Anything else on those items? Item number 12 is reports on committee meetings. Any reports on committee meetings?
Pretty short week.
Any citizen concerns? Any concerned citizens? Any board concerns?
I have one.
Yes.
Not really a concern. Next Wednesday is landfill meeting. Once again, I can't go to it. So I'm hoping someone can fill in for me. It's just happened about the last three meetings. I was good for about the first seven years, but this, last year's just been, I don't know.
Is that the 20th? No.
It's the 20, it's the 13th. I'm sorry. I mean, I just, I just don't...
We have WIC that morning, too.
I'll be at that. I just can't be there.
Yeah, what time does that start? Somebody needs to send me the info.
Six, maybe? I'll look at, I'll look at my phone. I haven't got my phone.
6:30?
There you go, okay. I think it's right before the...
Thank you.
They have the 9/11 meeting that, that week, I think, or that, I think they tried to... What's that?
Hmm?
Yeah, it's right before like the mayor's meeting of the 9/11.
I can do, I can do it. 6:30, yeah.
All right, Mark's got you.
Mark will do it. Thank you, Mark.
All right, very good. Anything else? Hearing none, let's enter.